No, I want to say thank you for all your years of service. Welcome. I'd like to call the Fayette County School Corporation Board of School Trustees Work Session to Order. We are here at the Public Administration Building. It's Thursday, August 30th, 2018, and it is 6:00 PM. I would like to ask everybody to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Nobody intertook me.
Okay. That's a good thing. Okay. I would like to entertain a motion to approve tonight's agenda as submitted and amended.
I summon.
Thank you, Anne. Do I hear a second?
Not for that one second.
Thank you, Chris. Any discussion? All those in favor signify by raising your hand. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Tonight, we are here for the main discussion item, which is the Conrithill High School Solar Project presentation. Ms. Ellen Tollent.
I don't really, yeah, I really don't have anything for Tony.
Scott.
We wanted to have some more conversation about the solar project.
Right.
Nick and Ryan are here again, the slide presentation, to talk about the various options. Mr. Judd and Mr. Hensley are here to, I think they have a recommendation related to the properties or pros and cons of a couple of the properties that are higher on the list.
Just to start things out, could we get those guys to go ahead and present?
Which guys? Brian and Randy?
Brian and Randy.
Oh, all right.
All right.
And what, do you guys have your PowerPoint too that you could put up with the documentation?
It is.
Okay, could we maybe put the slides up that they're talking about with the locations? So Randy, you and Brian want to talk about the discussions you've had and what you've gotten from the various staff members?
About each location.
The locations, yes.
About each location and what? All of them or just the favorite ones?
Just any of the, um, any of the discussions they've had with, um...
Pertinent people.
The pertinent people.
Patriots, yes. Teams, coaches.
Well, uh...
Yes.
Somebody get a lot over here.
Yeah.
What I'll do and Brian will help me is, we weren't prepared to present, so it's gonna be great. We're gonna go through each option, tell you who we talked to, and what might be some of the use of that facility that some of it, I wasn't even aware of until we talked to football coaches, soccer coaches, boys and girls, we talked to cross-country coach, we talked to Gabe Nobby, and who else did we talk to?
Steve Duncan.
Yeah, Mr. Duncan. And so this is option one. This is the area where if you know the campus, there are two field goals either in, that's a practice football field that is used more often than I knew. The football team does use it a couple days a week, and soccer teams before this year, because they decided this year, we can't practice at all on our main field. But in past years, while one of the teams was practicing on our main field, the other team, let's say the girls' team, would go out and practice on that field. And then the next night, they would switch. And so they informed me that, you know, when we get our field back, which we have now, that that will happen more often, they'll be using that field. Also, that field is used almost every evening during the fall by junior football leagues. A lot of people practice there, and he's probably seen that.
Another consideration for that location was in regards to the Career Center. So Mr. Duncan had expressed some, not necessarily concern, but just maybe some foresight if we ever did need to expand the Career Center. That's the most logical place based on the terrain. It's, that's the flattest, that's the closest to them. So that was another concern in that area as well along with the sporting events, so...
Cross-country course goes through that area three different times. So that's an area that a lot of kids use, a lot of community members use it as far as P E sports. And so we kind of shied away from that as an option. This is me. Option two, I can't tell you how stressed we made Coach Kelly when we said this was being considered, because he had just lost part of his practice field when we built the new softball field. And so he practices on that field, as you know, almost every day of the week except on Thursday nights when they practice on the field on the nights before game night. He uses it all year long when they have football workouts, conditioning. There, sometimes they'll have a small flag football league, and that's where they play. They go ahead and line that field and play out there.
And sometimes they use it for P E. It was indicated that outside.
He does use it. They absolutely do, and the P E football teams also use that area. You'll see maybe three or four practicing at once in that same area.
And again, in addition to the sports team utilizing that, there's about, the terrain drops about 11 feet from the flat area just behind the softball field to the track. There's about an 11-foot drop, so that would kind of, you know, pose a little bit more of a headache as far as installation would go if we decided to put it there.
Soccer teams don't use that very often because of the football teams there, but the cross-country courses for both high school and middle school run through that area. So we did not think that was a viable option. Number three, this is the northern part of the FFA, currently FFA farm fields. It does fit in there nicely. We have no athletic teams using that area at all. That would be our number-one choice. Mr. Nobby does not like that number-one choice, obviously. He has a second area that he would rather go to, and understandably, we all want to protect our territory. So the thing about that is, we don't use that for anything other than the planting of the crop, whatever crop it is, the planting of corn and beans and the harvesting of that. Mr. Nobby does use that from time to time for classroom lessons. And the good thing about it, in my opinion, is we still have plenty of farmland left for that educational aspect of planting a crop, harvesting, fertilizing, treating it for insects, and kids who are involved in that will still have a place to do that.
So both fields, that one and one, I know the other options, are both used by FFA?
There's a total, I, again, correct me if I'm wrong, about 17 acres there total?
Seventy-one.
Yep. And so this would take up about three and a half of that. One of the other reasons for the recommendation of this spot was the installation. So the, can I come up and point out a few things up here?
Please.
So what we're here for, so basically where we would be running the lines into is possibly right over here, so kind of behind the kitchen area of the greenhouse, and that's the shortest route to get the power where we would need to get it to. What we also have in this area is, we wouldn't lose any parking for staging of construction equipment, because we have this area here, we have this area here as well, and we'll also, we could pull construction vehicles back the lane here, so we wouldn't be losing any parking or anything like that. So in addition to the ease of installation from this point as opposed to any of the other locations, just that parking is a factor as well. We're gonna run into that with the field house. We're gonna have to come up with a solution, and this solution's kind of already built in, so...
Brian, do you know the distance from the last solar panel to that first residence, roughly?
I don't know. I don't know what that is.
It's three ounces, so...
This, this here?
Yeah. I'm very familiar with the next property of the street, so... Gabe?
Yeah?
This is a question. That whole thing is 17.1 acres. Why was this area right here, just because of proximity? Is that, is that why you wanted to preserve that, the proximity to the high school?
Yeah.
Sure.
Well, a couple reasons. Definitely that, I mean, that's part of it. I mean, if you looked at, when we walk kids out there, we're looking at probably, probably about 10, 15-minute walk there and back, so in a 15-minute period, you're eating up quite a bit of time. So that's another five minutes closer, I mean, so that's, that's part of it. Also, that's a loss of income for our FFA chapter, and that serves 132 students, 122 this year, 132 last year. And that money's used to pay for their FFA dues, because we're currently and have been for the last few years an affiliate chapter, which is about between $1,500 and $2,000, and that's about what that makes. So, you know, that's the big concern is, you know, the loss of revenue. We do have some very healthy fundraisers, but they're very dependent on sponsors, and with the agriculture climate kind of declining here lately and profits dwindling, some of those may be going away. This has been a very secure source, and I'd hate to lose it, because I'm very fearful that it would hurt our students.
Okay. So basically speaking, taking off that approximately, what, three acres, Brian?
Yeah.
Okay, so that would constitute about 20%.
Yeah.
About 20% of that space. So that's 20% of the rep...
Yeah.
Well, in years to come, I guess we'll state a new baseball field in the other part. Is that maybe down the road or something? So then the Ag students would have no...
I really could see that.
I would too.
Gabe, how many of your students actually are involved in the planting, harvesting?
Depends on the time of year. Planning, it's only three or four, harvesting, three or four. We have a crop scouting teams that go out there, they work it in the summer, go out there at least once a week, and that's between, we've had as many as 10, as few as five. And then depending on how things fall out, we typically try to have a field day out there. This year, we won't have one, and last year, we're gonna have one, just because of the way things fell out. But that would be, we take my intro classes, so that's all the first-year Ag students, anyone that relates to plant, and they bring them out and bring in ground and stand and have them teach things about that.
So how many times have you been out this year with them already?
This year? Like, the county year or this school year?
This school year.
Uh, is it you count in the summer or not?
Just since the school year started, I'm just...
I don't know how much it's you. We haven't been out there this week. Not yet. We're getting ready to go out in probably next semester, so we just finished up schools.
Gabe, is there, you know, are, just throwing this out there, I know it would be a distance and it would be a hassle and all that, but would you think that there'd be any area farmers that would be willing to donate, you know, a few acres to the FFA program? Has that ever been mentioned?
I've never heard of such a thing, and if I were a farmer and I got ground that's worth eight to $10,000, I would not do that. I mean, that's just the reality of it. I've not heard of anything like that.
Okay.
But the real, the real big thing is the loss of income. I mean, that's, that's a huge one.
Basically 20%?
Yeah, so I mean, it's between $1,500 and $2,000.
Of course, that's pretty nice to have, of course, you're the leader of that group, to have that guaranteed income every year.
Yeah.
You know, I wish we could do that for all of our extracurricular groups. That's a pretty nice little...
It's not just extracurricular, because this is, we're not just outside of school, it's in class too. So, I mean, a lot of these things take place in class, so it's actually...
It's an...
It's still a pretty nice little check you get every year.
Yeah. It's between, typically totals between $7,000 to $10,000, depending on how the crops do here.
So this is basically, you're considering us an extension of your classroom?
Yes.
Okay. Can I ask, you don't have to move the slide, but on option one that was over there by the Career Center, how many acres was that, is that area?
All the options that are, that are listed, they all are the same size, they're all around three and a half acres.
Oh, okay, wherever the, okay.
Wherever the blue is, it's all about the same size.
Oh, okay.
Different, different shape, but same area.
Different configuration.
On this one here, if you notice though, on the field here, that's a four-acre field. So if you notice that back, that bottom part, you're gonna leave substantial amounts. You got a half acre there, and you're not gonna be able to put crops around, unless you're gonna grow that.
Right, right.
So that's gonna grow up either into trees, weeds, whatever.
Moving right along. Number four.
Option four, this is the area right across the street. I think that's where Steve Duncan sunbathed in the summertime. We found no athletic teams that use that area. Cross-country doesn't go through there, we don't practice, it's a hill, obviously. And that, to me, if we go to phase two, would be an option if we put another solar field in. It would be a little bit more expensive to locate there, because you have a lot farther distance to attach it to where Brian showed you earlier.
Just kind of an estimation on the difference in installation cost from option three to option four is somewhere between $20,000 to $25,000. Again, that's the total estimate. And there would have to be a lot of boring done, obviously, because we're not gonna run anything overhead, it's all gonna be into the ground. So there'd be a lot of things to keep in consideration there. So we'd be crossing gas lines, water mains, fiber optic, new, new electricity that Duke just ran this summer. So if you get into one of those and you, and you cut a line, so your expense could go exponentially higher in pretty short order. So that was another thing to keep in consideration with option number four. And also, again, we talked a little bit about phase two, so if we ever decided to move on to a phase two, that's the most logical place for the second phase of the project.
Meaning both the high school and the vocational school would be on solar power?
Yes, that's correct.
Correct. Do we have enough room in that area for both the high school and the, to provide electricity for both the high school and the vocational school?
Well, what, right now, we have, and I can let the solar experts talk about that a little bit more, but we've got one meter for the entire hill, with the exception of the, of this building here. So we would have to have another meter installed to make the, make the field any bigger, so...
This is ideally my, the best option, I think. I mean, if it's not used, it's not used, we spend money mowing it, I think that's probably the best, best place for it. It doesn't affect any students, and I think we might lessen our cost of maintaining that, so that makes sense to me and to mine.
A question on your costs, you said maybe $25,000, and then you said something about it, and if we break the line, and blah, 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 which I was, I would hope that if you're, who's ever doing the construction would know where all the lines were, so how is it?
Well, they, when you, when you do any sort of underground utility, you have a company come in and locate everything.
Sure, right.
Called 811.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you locate the lines, and you can get an approximate depth of what they are, and, but it's never a guarantee.
Okay.
If you go and, it's called, it's called directional boring, so it's basically kind of like a remote control, this, under the ground, it follows to this certain box. But if it hits a rock and it's gotta go underneath, there's, there's some factors that are out of our control, basically, so...
Option five, the neighborhood backyards to the west, cross-country track does go through there, courses do go through there. We don't use it for anything else, but to be honest, there were no people that I talked to that thought that that was a good option.
No.
Joe Milwaukee said yes, if you could run a cord to it.
Bill's pushing it for free electricity. Wondering if he can get his windows tinted for the glare.
That was not a good one.
Option six, right in the middle of the field, none of us thought that would be a good option, as we do intend to be Title IX compliant in the future and have a second baseball field, since we do have two softball fields. We can play JV and varsity games on the same night, at the same time. Varsity could practice while JV's playing. Can't do that. Our varsity team had to vacate the field this year many times while JV was playing, so that's, that's a hope to have another baseball field out there at some point.
And I just asked Scott about those woods. He said it's a big ravine, because I'm thinking, clear those woods. I mean, not, not today, and not necessarily for this project, but for future things, but that's not usable land, apparently, within that.
No, it's, it's very severe, and you can't tell from, from overhead, but when you're there physically, it's, it's just a big ravine.
Yeah.
That's how, how, howography is pretty much hillside.
Yeah. I just wondered, that's why I asked.
Lot of water pushes off.
Yeah.
So, thank you.
And, okay, and the $25,000, that, you said that was like a testament, that would be an upfront cost, just in the metering and hooking up for that distance, is that?
Well, not necessarily the metering, just the, just the cost of the installation would fill up by, by that much.
Because it's so far.
Because of the proximity.
It's so far from where they would hook in, yeah.
And that's, I'm assuming you've talked with these guys?
Yeah, as well as not only the expense of the boring and the extra lines up, but civil review would be probably $5,000 to $6,000 more there as well, just because they're going through, they're going under building, going through a lot of extra properties, so there'd be a lot more in-depth analysis on that.
And the, would the plus side be, or would this be true for all the locations, that that would then service both the Career Center and the high school?
No, well, actually, you know, the way the metering and the lines are set up now, anything that wasn't used at the high school would filter over to the Career Center.
It would?
Yeah, and that's why we would include metering.
But it's only 60%. Remember, we talked about that, that it was only generate 60% of what we're using on this whole complex now, because they're off of one meter, aren't they? The whole hill is. So this would not generate, the way we are now, with it being one, it's considered one site, it would not generate 100% of what we use.
And remember, this is, and that's because this is the maximum allowable size.
Right, that's right. With it being one location.
Correct.
Yeah.
And if we did add the additional meter to the, to the hill here somewhere, and we could add that additional field in, in option number, I believe that was number four, on the hillside right here, we could have another solar field, the same size, which would, in theory, cover 100% of the, of our, of our energy cost.
What, what land you, I'm just asking, the bottom of the screen on the other side of Spartan Drive or whatever, where those panels are, is that literally how far the boundary is there, or does, is there more?
That's the road.
That's the road?
That's the road, that's the road.
Oh, that's the, okay.
That's the road right there.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
I got something to say.
Oh, yeah.
If we would look at the future, and I think solar is the future, and we would have both phases, we don't have an estimate for both phases. Therefore, I'm, I'm hesitating in getting this done right away, because I'd like to see those estimates when anybody else bid on this project. I just, I just think we're moving fast, and I'd like to take a hard look at both of those, those concerns. Phase two, what that cost would be, and would anybody else bid this project for us?
Well, they would, this is a, they're giving us an estimate of what they think. It's like the big boiler project we had at the middle school, they estimated it to be around $900, a thousand if it came in underbid. They would have to bid this, this project out.
Right.
The same way, so we don't know a firm cost until you actually bid it, because...
Well, we don't even have an estimate on two phases.
No, we have not asked for that, this is...
But if we liked this site, that, to me, would only make sense that we would look at two phases.
And Mark, it would be the same-sized system, so you could essentially, correct me if I'm wrong, you could essentially double the number, if you're maximizing the benefit.
And then you're pushing that $5 million mark, like we have on the field house, where if we got over that, we'd be in a pickle.
We'd have to go about it a different direction.
Yeah. And so that's part of what our conversation had included, you know, doing...
This timetable.
Well, doing one.
Right.
And then perhaps the other as a second project. You know, at the high school, we're doing the field house as one project of about $5 million.
Right.
And then a future project of the office area.
You know, Mark, I'm, I mean, phase two is a long way off. I don't know that you only, you don't do phase one unless you consider phase two. You mean, I think you could do...
But I was getting the idea that everybody liked this location, that's, that was kind of the vibe I was getting.
Right, right. And so you're saying, then you would want to have phase two so you could power those areas that are not going to be served by this? That's what you're saying? Which, I mean, I understand that, I don't, I don't know that the phase, for me, I don't know that the phase one decision has to rest on, well, you know, what are we gonna do in the future, because I see them as separate kind of...
There were only two, two locations that did not affect students.
Okay.
That was one of them, and the other.
And the farm field.
And then, next one, no, number five.
No, five.
The one that was...
That's the first farm field.
That affects students.
Yeah.
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 Right, yeah.
Yes.
The one I was talking, the option I was talking about, that was the...
But it does affect students, because it said that cross-country...
Cross-country, yeah. Because, because basically, if my notes are correct, the only one that really doesn't affect students is six. The one we're just talking about, the one...
Oh, can four. We went out by the administrative building.
Can we get a recap, both for ourselves and for the patrons, about the dollar costs?
So, system size at 999 kilowatt, basically a megawatt, which is what, to get the full benefit, that's the maximum allowable size. The annual production kilowatt-hours is what's offsetting about 60% of the high school consumption. After the financing payment with the electrical savings, it's cash flow positive in year one in this project. The net 20-year benefit while you're paying off the system, so including paying off the systems, 1.7 million over 20 years. Once you've paid the system off, the net 30-year benefit is $5.1 million. Installation cost is just under 2.5, and then you can see the numbers, the 3,500 panels, 30 embers, et cetera. So quick numbers there.
And the panels are three feet at the lowest level and about 10 feet at their highest, right, the way they're slanted?
Okay. And just a question to clarify, because I did a little looking online. I always have to laugh when I say that, because, you know, I'm, I'm thinking back to the days before there was online, you go to the library and you use the card catalog, and that seemed like real information, but maybe it wasn't then either. But the green benefits are high. The carbon footprint by going to solar, from what I've read, is that you save, it's like, without solar, it's like 20 times more. I don't know if those figures that I saw online were accurate, or whether you could even speak to that, but the, the CO2 emissions are zero or very little.
On the solar itself?
Right.
Yeah, correct.
So...
Well, it depends on how you look at it. You can calculate, you know, after the panels are built, there's, there's no CO2 emissions. Now, if you look at the material, the lime, and the expense, the energy that would end up in building that, then there's between $6,000 and $8,000, you know, that...
That you are...
Took this much to build those, but then after that, it offsets.
And I realize that that's not necessarily a high priority for a lot of folks, it's a big priority for me, I just say that.
Also looking at this...
I like the idea of reducing our carbon footprint.
Looking at this too, you know, we, there's a trail, is that, that's a trail there that comes out from the top of the field? Is that just a walking trail, is that an actual road?
That's a street.
Oh, that's it, like a public...
My daughter lives on it, trust me, it's a street. Yeah, that's a street, and this is all the residential, this, right in here is all the residential area with lots of children.
I am comfortable, if there are patrons that would like to approach the board, we would ask that you respectfully keep it short, but if there is anybody that would like to share an opinion or a thought as we're looking at this, we would like to hear from you.
Real quick, I've been through a similar situation on the city, I mean, you guys know my role as the, on the city councilor president. Just wondering, is there a performance contract that goes along with this that keeps things in line, and is it, does it have insurance? Those are two big things I would definitely ask about.
It is guaranteed energy savings contract, that's what Performance Service does, is sort of, this is not accurate, I know, but they sort of work like an architect on a project in that they specify the project and then they gather all the bids, so we still go through all of those steps for the bidding, which I think Mark was, was speaking to about, you know, whether we could get other... to about, you know, whether we could get other bids or not. And then there is a guaranteed piece of it.
So the reason why we had, like, they, and I don't know too many, because I don't have, but at the city level, they gave us a contract that outlined exactly what their guarantee, and then also they provided insurance, like, in case the company were no longer creating funds or something like that, that recovered the cost of that over a period of time. I would definitely, I think, those are things you might look into.
Can you guys speak to the performance?
Yeah, so there's a, there's a performance guarantee, energy guarantee, there's performance bonds, energy guarantee. The city financed it through First Internet Bank. First Internet Bank pushed the risk on, to the school, to provide, oh, I'm sorry, to the city to provide the insurance, which is obviously more costly. So that can be discussed if you...
I wanted to know.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. But First Internet Bank is, of the banks that we've worked with to finance these projects, they are the only one that has required that insurance. But there's energy guarantee through us. And then, you know, it's on us to make sure that the system is performing, you know, in all weather conditions, you know, to make sure you guys are getting the benefit.
The middle school project has an energy guarantee also.
And if I could speak on behalf of Performance Services, just based on the project that they helped us with at the middle school, they've been fantastic. Their support has been top-notch. The contractors that they brought in were fantastic. There were no issues security-wise at the middle school. Again, it's just been a great experience for me, being new to this role. The whole, just kind of the whole package that they bring, I think, is very beneficial. Because again, we have the guaranteed savings. If there ever was any sort of issues, they were quick to remedy that or get the right people in to remedy that. So I think, I just wanted to make sure that that was known to the board as well, so.
They're well-known in the school industry throughout the state. I have several peers that use them, called them for references before we did. The project at the middle school had already heard of them. I was on the IAS award with their owner, Tim Thoman, so they've been around for quite a while.
I checked from the legal side with our attorney, who's one of the top attorneys in the state, and she said they have very high marks and are very reputable, stand out. So we did our homework on them as well, as we should with...
Well, I think it's important that patrons know that we did our homework, you know?
Right. Gabe, did you, yeah, go ahead.
The other thing that we did at the city that I'm not sure if you're aware of, is we also implemented LED lighting across all the buildings. So I don't know if that's something you were looking at or not. I'm guessing we have more lights, but I don't know, maybe not.
I think we are doing that.
We are. That's around part of our capital projects plan and initiative.
We are doing that, and I don't know where we are with that, but it's a gradual process. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Jane Scott, based on the figure that we got for the bill from one year, I think the patrons would be interested maybe in knowing what that would be monthly, or our monthly savings. If Warren and I were talking, we thought it'd be around $12,000 to $15,000 a month, just looking at those figures.
Right, you'll see, and Janie can talk more to the numbers than I can, because she deals with that. The first year, the estimates they gave us was around $30,000 after all of our costs. Then it starts going up and increasing each year. When you look at our total energy costs for one year for this meter for the high school, what was the number again?
374,000.
374,000.
That was the last year.
Fourth year.
Yeah. Now, their number for an annual amount wasn't quite that high, but they had used some averages, I believe, of the data that we had. I don't think you had it quite as high as 374, if we went without the project on an annual basis.
I'm sorry, the cost of it, our yearly in electricity, so yearly, in year one, we've got basically, what we're calling a revenue to do for the school of just under $200,000. And then you're paying for, obviously, financing the system of about $165,000. So that's where the 30,000 in cash flow positive is year one, and obviously, because you pay off the system.
Let's play, I have a question.
No, I just, well, just a couple comments. First of all, as one who lives right alongside five, I'm really happy to hear that that is the least favorite, and I'm sure my neighbors are as well. So thank you very much, and thank you for considering the residences who live within the confines of this area. The other thought that I had, listening to Gabe, and you leave me, we have a daughter-in-law who works for National FFA and a son who now works for the State Fair Commission, so I strongly support agriculture. But the one comment that I would have is, with part of the savings that you're receiving from potentially going with solar energy, could some of that money be funneled into the FFA program to subsidize what Gabe and his students might not be receiving? If you chose site number, what was it? You know, you might consider that possibility. I mean, think of it as leasing his land, and then giving that program the money that they so, you know, so adequately and strongly deserve. That's just food for thought. Again, thank you for not liking site five. And thank you for my neighbors.
Send the bill to you or Joe.
Send the bill to you.
I'm pretty close to my house, too. I'm not worried about that. I would like to make sure you understand that we're all just learning about this. I just learned about the same meaning you guys, like, you have a tough decision ahead of you. I don't know if we have to make that decision this year. I know Mark has some questions that we need to get answers to. I will make a comment on the FFA losing revenue. If you remember a few years ago, when we added chart wells to the concession stands, there were lots of groups, extracurricular groups, that lost revenue. Band in particular was one of them, was very upset with that situation. And then they turned around and now they have 100 new band uniforms. So they were able to find alternative funding. Obviously, the board helped them a great deal in reaching their goals. But that's big, kind of school corporation land, that's not FFA property, that's not FFA land. If we build a new school sometime, I would suppose that since we don't own property all over the place, we're either going to have to buy some property or build on the property that we have somewhere. So there's lots of things to consider, and I don't want any of you to feel rushed into this. We need to make the best decision for our kids, no matter if they're FFA kids, football kids, cross-country kids, the future kids that aren't born yet. It's going to go beyond all of us in our tenure here, so that's my two cents.
Yeah, I would, I would second that. I agree with that. I mean, I think that, you know, it's been brought to the board, obviously, on the amount of savings that we can have to a community and to the school corporation on the solar panel. And I think it's, you know, green energy is obviously very positive. And the $30,000 we would save in the first year, I think that escalates up to 40, 50 the next year, then just keeps ramping up as we pay down the note. So I mean, you're talking, it gets into six figures of savings within a matter of four or five years. It's not stuff that we, we obviously want to rush right into and get done, but there's somewhat, I don't want to say timeline, the, there's been some state laws, I think, that went from a 30-year net down to, we're now at the 15-year.
And it's a 15 to fine year.
Yeah. The next year's 14, and then it goes down to 15.
In 15 years, not 15 years from when you start.
It's just a tremendous amount of money to leave on the table, so to speak, and not really address and just at least take a look at. Yeah, there are a lot of variables there. You don't want to take up anything, but you have to make it large enough in order to be worthwhile. You know, you look at that, and you think, well, can we cut that down to a half or a third? I mean, I guess you could, but then does it really offset, you know, the cost of putting it in with the savings and whatnot? And it, you know, crunch on the numbers, it doesn't, it doesn't make sense at that point. But yeah, I think as a board member, I would be willing to, you know, obviously do some more investigation without jumping into this, and, you know, you have aesthetics to worry about and where you're going to locate it at, and then you don't want to take up practice fields or, you know, FFA stuff or any of that. You know, you don't want to make those sacrifices, but, and it doesn't, doesn't necessarily just boil down to money, you know, it's not that. But, but I would agree, I think there's some more investigation, some more questions that we have to have answered before, you know, I would be comfortable jumping in there and saying, let's, you know, let's make a decision tonight, let's get this going. I don't know that I...
I don't think we're making a decision tonight anyways. It's just a work session. But what questions do you need answered? What is the information that you guys want? Because I want to hear that. What do you need to hear, besides what we've heard tonight?
What is the, I apologize for being late, I had some personal things. Have we decided on a site?
Well, no, but of all the sites, that's the one that's the most popular with, the one that was just down there. Three's most popular with Randy and the school people.
Yeah.
That impacts less groups.
But the problem with this one is...
It's a distance.
Is the distance and the amount, what Brian was...
And that would not leave you a place to go to if you chose to add the Career Center later, because you would need that land somewhere else.
Except that Steve said he would want to go north or northeast. Isn't that what you said that, if he built on, he would go in that practice field?
Yeah. If you would decide to add more solar panels...
Oh, okay.
You'd be out of land there.
You would be out of land.
Right.
And then you'd be looking at the FFA, yeah, to run that back across to the Career Center.
We've got our patrons, like, they sound...
Absolutely.
Terry, hold on. If you don't, well, I, but listening to your discussion there about where are you going to locate it, you know, I would have a favorite choice, too, but you're going to make somebody upset, okay? No matter whether it's the football coach or Gabe, you're going to make somebody upset. So that's your decision. But I'd like for Nick to go back to slide to where it had the numbers, dollars.
That's where, yes.
Because that's where I, as a taxpayer, are very interested, right here, right here. Because again, I know that those numbers just weren't drawn out of a hat. But if I was sitting there and making a decision, I wouldn't be convinced that it's going to make me save money. You know, I wouldn't doubt that it will save me some money, but my investment is going to be pretty large to be able to get that back in a return. Because like annual production, I'm assuming that means the maximum that it can produce. Because again, the sun doesn't shine very good every day. You know, all the vital will pass through clouds, but not every day. It rains, it storms, and so forth. So those days are going to get nil. My understanding is the system has no batteries, you know, it's hooked up. So the only time you're going to get electricity is when that is occurring.
Except that, don't we bank some of that in the summer if we get...
That's a bit of a net metering. It's kind of like you're using a grid.
Oh, okay.
And Terry, real quick, that, that production number, annual production number is conservative. It is not the max, we're not running cash flows on maximum utility escalation, maximum production. These are conservative numbers.
That's an average of weather data set, that's 20 years of weather data. That's an average. So you're going to see, what we see from that is, what's our conservative numbers, is a, you know, you have a swing of 5%, or so each year, just depending on if you have more cloud cover or some years.
That was one of the things I'd be concerned with. The other thing is, all I do is not going to keep the rate the same forever. You will see a range. So then, does that change the number somewhere? I think it will.
It's included in there. You put an escalation, an inflation factor in there, in the numbers.
And I heard you say, Scott, that you had insurance, that there would be security, because that's one of the things that's absolutely necessary. Who owns that? Is it they have to build it?
The control of the product is not.
When you, the sole owner of that?
Oh, the property, yeah.
Say that again.
Can you repeat it, Terry?
When do you become owner of that solar array? The day that they have it built, it's yours? You're going to have maintenance on it? Are they, there going to be a maintenance contract? Because I'm not insulting your maintenance people here, but you're not going to have them going there and all this is wired loose.
And they may want to talk a little bit about their service with that.
So there's, there's O and N funds in, in these numbers, in these cash flows, and there's also insurance funding in this cash flow.
Because I think it's very, very important to have that done, because again, you never know when somebody comes out there with a gun, somebody can just start shooting the solar panels. You don't want that to happen, but, you know, that's something we have to have secured. But, you know, I believe in solar, yes, but it's got to be proven to me that it is. If you want to see two operating systems, one of them's RPL, the Gritzman, you can drive up 27 and see it there on the left, they've had it in operation for a while, and you'll see that it tracks. Okay, absolutely, it needs to track. And then the other one is up here on I-70 and three, at the Newcastle Exchange. That array right there is a combination of three different RMCs. So that's another place you can look at. And if you really wanted to push and shove, I think I could get you to take a tour of that place, because I'm a director for Whitewater Valley, and will be for the next three years. So I have been for the last 12. So in other words, if you want to see an operating one, it goes, you know, say, well, well, you're going to look underneath it, it's grass. And time up, you said three feet for them to be able to mow that grass comfortably. I mean, those are little maintenance things that you have to think about. But you're in the major things right now, and I think, like, like you said, it's important that you make this correct decision. Because you can't go out there and halfway through.
Right.
One other thing, I know I'm talking a little bit longer, but Leslie mentioned about, you know, making money off of that and then reimbursing him a little bit. Here's another thought. Three acres is going to come out of production. You figure out what he loses in production each year with the crop that he's planting, and reimburse his budget with that. You know, when I was teaching, the school board gave grants, and that was something that they gave. I had science clubs, and so we had a grant from the school board. So, you know, there is a place, because I'm on the FFA committee advisory committee also, and so I didn't want to bother him about losing the ground, but if he's going to, you know, he's got to find a way, and I don't really want him to go out there on Fifth Street and have a tin can out. Thank you. Thank you.
Good question. This is probably really stupid.
No.
No stupid question.
It's okay, Connie. Could be put on the roof. Has that ever, is that an option? Has that ever been done? Or is, it's in nobody's way.
That's not a stupid question. We do, try to make a simple answer, we do do a lot of roofs that you don't have any land. The problem with the roof is it's a somewhat smaller angle, or shorter angle, so you did a lot of production, so you came back, and plus you have more structural reviews, and you're adding something on the roof that, when that roof eventually goes out, the panels actually increase the life of the roof a little. But when that roof does go down, you lose panels, re-roof, so it does increase the expense of the roof. So that's one of the reasons why we have land, or there has to land. It's the cost of insulation, the cheapest insulation, you know, about that.
And the operation and maintenance costs are higher with a roof system than with a ground mounted, isn't that what you indicated?
Correct. And there's options, as Terry mentioned, the grass and having to mow the grass underneath the three-foot panels, there's options, there are all kinds of options of things that you could put underneath the panels, like, trying to get into the, trying to get into the weeds a little bit at this stage, but there are ways to reduce the amount of expenses that happen with the system, to the point about shooting up the panels. There's, I guess a fence won't necessarily stop that, but also included in this, obviously, is a perimeter fence to help secure the site.
Cameras.
Cameras. We can, I mean, as you mentioned, Terry, we're, I've got schools here that we've worked with recently on solar arrays, you guys, I mean, site visits were more than that, to provide those if you, if you need them.
Janie, I guess, a question I would have was, a topic that Mrs. Galowski brought up, taking some of the savings we would have on that, is it possible that you could shift that? I know there's a change in the way our budgets are done, you know, coming in 2019. Can you do that with line items, or how does that work?
Yeah, and we've had conversation about this. I mean, it's lots of ideas in the conversations and meetings, so I'm not going to name any names associated with any of the comments. We talked about that. Then there is, yeah, we could. What happens if and when for Title IX? You need the other land for the athletic field. Have you set yourself up to making a payment to add for that? It is the school corporation's, Lee and Mr. Duck pointed that out. Another part of the discussion was that, to our knowledge, the group that was together could not think of any other groups that fundraise with our land. I mean, yeah, they sell candles... I mean, yeah, they sell candles in our buildings, or they sell different things, products for their fundraising, but they don't use our land necessarily for fundraising, so I'm just sharing. Don't shoot the messenger. My son was in FFA, he was president, you know, my nephew was president for two years, so I am a huge supporter of FFA. I'm just telling you the different things we talked about. We talked about too, if it's gonna cost $20,000 to put it over here, do we take that $20,000 and the extra cost and say, okay, we'll not subsidize you forever, but maybe we take, we will subsidize FFA for the next 10 years to the tune of $2,000, but it's sort of a grandfather provision. So, you know, I'm sharing conversations, we've had that, you know, I don't want anybody to like throw rocks at me or anything, I'm just telling you different ideas have been vetted that, you know, for, my personal favorite is for, we take the $2,000 a year for 10 years, there's a defined end, we, you know, because it's gonna cost us more to put it there, but...
We're having a lot of conversation about a site that we haven't built yet.
I know, so, that's the number one pick of most of the people, so.
I'm sorry, just one final comment. In the research that I've done, I also saw, and I thought it was interesting, the use of parking lots and actually covering the parking lots and putting the solar panels on top, on the roof of that. Now, again, that might be very much cost prohibitive, I don't know what the difference in cost would be, but you have two huge parking lots, one on each side of CHS, so even if you were going into a Phase 2, let's say, in the future, if you did something with the parking lot closer to the football field to cover the CHS campus, which is very close, you're talking about running lines, I don't know whether you would see an offset, there's just so many unanswered questions, but I just wanna throw that out as a possibility. I thought it was an interesting concept.
Leslie, you're talking about a canopy, right? A canopy with student parking underneath the solar panels on top.
And students staff park underneath it. It's an interesting concept, one I think you might consider.
Sure.
In regards to those, we have looked at those in several facilities, but run into the same issue where you have a lower angle, you have that same angle as a roof, then you have such a higher expense, so that's why you see a lot of those out in the east and west coast where their utility rates are so much higher, two or three times the way you see now. So, really, we have not done any of the canopies as a previous, that makes it possible.
To me, that would be, I wouldn't want my 17-year-old daughter driving under those, and then you think of the kids who are jumping up and hanging on them. We can't secure that, I looked that up and did some research on those as well, but, and I don't think we have the three, three-and-a-half acre spot in either parking lot, but that's a creative idea. I actually looked it up and thought about that too, so, great minds.
Leslie, thanks for getting on the internet and doing your homework, and it must be a Leslie thing, cause I know, Leslie does the same thing, she's there, but thank you guys for doing that.
Does anybody else have anything they needed to speak up about, or, since we have other patrons, so, Randy?
Gabe left, and he wanted to stay. If you have questions, you can call him.
Okay.
He is bargaining with the unions tonight, so he...
Tough job.
He's in the union market.
Yeah. Thank you, Randy.
Does Duke have any input into this at all? I know you said it had to go into the northeast corner there by the tennis court. Does Duke enter the picture at all as to what you're up to, or?
Basically, what we look at is it's a simple interconnection study, and with the net metering rules, we have to go in behind the meter or so into the facility on the facility side of the meter, not on the Duke side. Nice if we could just cut right into Duke's power lines, but then you wouldn't have the net metering benefit now then.
And Duke has been the easiest, best room to take in your fork, as far as solar is concerned. And then the other thing I'll say, just because everyone didn't see our initial presentation, when Gabe brought the point of insurance, or how do we know that we're protected, I'd say, bigger than just the, I guess, from our standpoint, the financial incentive of paying you guys if the system doesn't perform or however that works. As Jane said, our business is K-12 schools in Indiana, that's where we were founded in 1998, we're headquartered in Indianapolis, that's who we were founded to serve, and that's our core business. We've done over 250 projects with Indiana K-12 schools, so our founder was a small private company, our reputation in the Indiana school market is so much more important to us, and I guess that outweighs, you know, that's our guarantee, I should say. So, I hope you'd call in, I'm sure Jane and Scott have called references, but we do what we can to make sure our customers are happy at the end of the day, because that's how our business survives. You guys are a small, tight-knit group, and we can't afford bad projects, bad references, so just wanna share that.
I had just one comment or thing I just wanted to bring up, because I don't wanna omit anything or act as if I'm not aware, I mean, we obviously have a fieldhouse project that we're undertaking. We obviously have other needs in our corporation, financial needs, that we as a board have just begun to touch on, things that, that I know Scott certainly has on his whiteboard, he's got more on his whiteboard than anybody could do right now, but, but the concern about money, that if we're doing two big projects, where does that leave us for other things? And so, I think that that's worthy of a discussion, just, I mean, I don't wanna prolong tonight's meeting, but monies that would be set aside for compensation with our teachers, monies that could go towards building improvements, where would that stand if we do this kind of a project?
Well, the intent of this project is to save money, and it would not be a bond issue. What we would be doing is issuing an operating lease. That operating lease would be paid out of the new operations fund in lieu of utility expense. So, you know, in year one, they project that we can pay $300,000 to Duke Energy for our utilities here. Or, we can pay 40% to Duke for our utilities, because it's not gonna cover 100%, plus the lease payment for the borrower. It does not come out of the debt service, it comes from the operations fund, I won't keep saying that.
I think you need to.
And then, when you compare, that would be, cost you, they're estimating, $270,000. So, that leaves you $30,000 of cash in the operations fund. So, the intent of this is to save money. The fieldhouse project is to save money, it's to secure our property, to offer more opportunities to our students. This is an effort towards savings, be more efficient.
Right, and I think that's important for everybody to hear, both on the board and our patrons.
Did that make sense?
Yes, it did.
Okay.
And that was significant to me.
So, we need more discussion.
We need more time.
But we're not making a decision today, and...
Right. Another question I guess that would happen is, I know hypothetically on paper, in order to get our 15-year net metering clause, I won't put that, it's gotta be in operation in 2018, but if we wait until 2019, where are our savings, how much savings would we be losing, considering we have, you know, on the...
It'd depend on installation, if it's operational, maybe.
So, we did it Q1 of 2019.
I'd have to look at the cash flow, but it's tens of thousands, I'd say in Q1.
Okay.
And just like on the, and once again, this was an educational piece, opposite of legislation, not a hurry up and sign type of, but the other thing you always run into, it's a volatile labor market, so just like we did on the guaranteed savings side, we try and guide our customers to go out to bid prior to the end of the year, to at least lock in labor and costs. If you wait till after Christmas or in the spring, you're gonna pay a premium for anything you do in this market. So, aside from just the loss in the net metering benefit, I would expect there to be a premium just with the labor market the way it is. And in the winter months, you don't know, you know it, so...
So, the 247 that we're proposing there would go up, obviously, due to...
I would expect it to.
Yeah, okay.
And this is a have-to thing.
Oh, I understand.
We were asked to, the city made the, you know, and moved towards some solar, we were asked to investigate it, we, you know, these are just facts we're presenting to you.
Leslie, board, we've gotta be visionary, we just can't worry about today. I said last meeting, I'll say again, I think it's no-brainer, I don't know when the timing is perfect, but it's all about saving money for the corporation in the future.
And energy costs are not going to go down.
I've been pretty quiet, and, you know, superintendent, but, you know, this is, ultimately falls under, you hire me as a board, I'm your boy, but, now, this is my home, and I'll tell the taxpayers, I have a family farm here, I pay my fair share taxes too, and I'm invested here, and so, this is gonna outlive Janie and me and all these board members, so, on the selfish side, Lord knows, I don't need another project on my plate right now, but when I look out for my kids, my daughter just bought a house here in Bay County, I see $5 million potentially conservative estimate of what our district will say. I'm a visionary person, I think the board recognizes that, Janie's a visionary person, and, you know, we're looking out for long-term, we don't have to do this right now, I mean, it makes my life a little easier to not do it, to be honest, and Janie's too, but I think we would be remiss to not look at, our buildings are getting old. I had a gentleman contact me and call the high school, the new high school on the hill, it's 50 years old. You know, and so I remember going out there, and March Heinemann was doing intermuros, first time I ever got to go in that gym, that's the coolest thing when I was a little guy, but I think it's, we're gonna have to look at replacing some buildings down the road too, and doing some major renovations. We have some buildings that need some other things added to them as well, so, ultimately, you guys have a tough decision, but I want the public to know that, you know, we're looking at a cost savings, we don't have to do it, we can continue to buy our energy through Duke and carry on this plan, but I love the dialogue, I love the community involvement, that's the way it should be in making these decisions. So, I just wanna thank you all for taking the time to come out, because we're in this together. We don't have all the answers, and, you know, this rests on the board's shoulders to make this decision. I can only give you my recommendation, and Janie's, and, you know, we've done some homework, and we think this is something worth pursuing. If we table it, there'll still be savings down the road too, maybe not as much, so, I just really wanna acknowledge you for coming out, that means a lot to take an interest in our schools, because, you know, we're a big business, and, you know, we're trying to find ways to improve things for our kids, so, thank you.
Catherine, you're standing, did you wanna say something?
Yeah, we drug our three poor children outside to say something. I just, you know, option five, that's our house, so we just wanna add our advocacy to at least know on option five. My other question, I didn't quite catch, how many residents are affected by the FFA location there? Does it does back up to...
No, option, over by Katie's house, we count one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, about eight.
So, that's eight people.
About eight, yeah, about eight.
Do they all have, are they all within sight, they would see it?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
And we talked about too, of putting pine trees or some nice foliage along the front there too, because we wanna be good neighbors wherever we put it, you know? So, I thought of you when I looked at the locations, I said, I don't think Catherine would probably like that in her backyard. I thought Joe as well, Leslie, bestest.
You put in a joke, it blows my head.
You hate your blow. Do you want us to... Tell it our way?
I guess we read it in the paper, we think it's a great idea, it's awesome. It makes me a little nervous about what could happen though in my backyard, I mean, if...
What about this location, though, that we were looking at on the south end of the...
The whatever, that location.
That one.
That doesn't impact your view or your...
No, that's me up there.
Okay.
We're on the, we're on the B, yeah.
Okay.
Above, yeah, that's our house right there, so...
Well, I think you can rest your shirt, I don't think any board member here is...
Yes, interested in that one.
Yeah.
None of us were interested in that.
Yeah.
There are about 40-foot trees right there on that west side, so we're just, our house is just west of the science building there, but that west line of trees, right, the right, you know, no, just come down, yeah, right there, those are about 40 feet, I mean, those are really tall trees, and it's really thick right there, so I don't know in terms of efficiency, you know, there's about two hours less sunlight there a day, so, I mean, it's mostly shaded, so, something to think about too, and also on that bottom row as well, I mean, there's a little shade there today as well, so, you know, something to think about just in terms of, you know, efficiency.
I think that one's off the table.
Yeah, yeah, a little self-serving there.
That's fine.
I'll shoulder all of the blame for option five. This was done without input from the school corporation, was where's land available for a size...
Yeah, it received a little bit of commentary at the meeting too.
Yeah, you Google mapped it, and then you plucked things in.
What are your, what are all of the options available, without any input from the school corporation or the board?
Well, we can also talk about how bad the drainage is on...
Can we delete this slide?
Store it in the side. All right, well, thank you all for your participation tonight. I would like to ask for a motion to adjourn.
Remove.
Lawrence, moving and moving. Second?
Second.
All those in favor signify by raising your hand, opposed, same sign. Meeting adjourned.